Good morning, it's August 20th, Tuesday, National Bacon Lover's Day. Fittingly, next month is National Cholesterol Education Month, so enjoy your BLTs as far as you can. So, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
All right, we got minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the August 13th meeting.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussions? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. Next, Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number two for the Fen and March Road water main replacement project, and the second is amending a legal service agreement with Albers and Albers to review and rewrite the sanitary rules and regulations.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Very good.
Thanks, Jeremy. And next, human resources assistant, Patty.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have two resolutions for you this morning. First is our personal change resolution. We have one promotion in commissioners, one appointment change in commissioners, 12 rate increases, four in JFS, one in office for older adults, one in county home, one in commissioners, three in sanitary engineers, one in dog shelter, and one in IT. We have one lateral change in sanitary, one leave of absence in sanitary, two resignations, one in maintenance, one in IT, and one retirement in county home. Our second resolution is amending the table of organization for commissioners.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Nobody's going to speak to the change within the commissioners' office. This makes it formal that Matt Springer will be moving from assistant county administrator to county administrator effective 9/9/24, and Chris Jacob will be going from full-time county administrator to part-time special projects director. We thank Chris for his service, and we'll be saying our goodbyes and all our commendations at a later time. He has to make it through after Labor Day, but he'll still be around, especially during budget season, so.
We have lots of special projects.
Lots of special projects. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brett Thomas, finance director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have eight resolutions for you today. Our first one is increasing our appropriations. Most of this is fairly standard movement into the different funds. The larger one of note is our capital improvements as we get to the point of being able to do many of the things that we set our budgets for this year. Our second resolution is transfer of appropriation. There is one item of note on this one, which is another increase to assigned council fees. Come 2025, actually, the amount that we are currently receiving from the state of Ohio will go down, and this amount will need to be much larger in our budget. For the time being, it's something that we are working with, with the courts. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Lots of little shifts here. A lot of those shifts, by the way, just because this is a very long resolution compared to normal, are just because of the fact that as we rolled through July, the grant periods end as of the end of June, so it's very, very common for us to have several that trail in through July and end up getting placed into the wrong fund just out of habit or that fund having the budget at that time. So, it's now time to make those adjustments. Our fourth resolution is cash transfers. The first one is for, we have one for solid waste and one for office of older adults. Our fifth resolution is creation of the Adult Probation Drug and Mental Health Court Specialized Docket Payroll Fund. This is the money transferred over from the Adam Board. I would like everybody to note the account numbers at the bottom, though probably we are the only ones that will really care very much about these. This is going to be the new format that you are going to see quite frequently. These changes allow us better tracking for grant years and grant purposes. Our sixth resolution is the expenses for travel of the county engineer. Seventh resolution is expenses of other county officials for travel. The only out of state here is for the sheriff for the transform law enforcement program in Lexington, Kentucky. And finally, our eighth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,745,855.93 and 93 cents.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
The appointed council fees, you said that was on the second resolution?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
What's the amount on that? It didn't jump out at me.
We have, actually, sorry, let me flip back.
$475,000.
Thank you.
There it is. Yep, I looked right over it.
Yep.
Looking at it again.
I guess to point out, when it comes to the reimbursement from the state, we all know it's gone down, and it seems like the dog that chases its tail. Every time we get the intent of the legislatures to try to fully fund, then we get a bump in the expenditures for various reasons, whether it's increasing the rates of compensation for attorneys, or more assigned council, or whatever the combination. At the CCO, I think I shared with you some of the legislative platform the CCO is working with, I think I sent it when we had our committee meeting. This week, we have a board meeting, as well as, I think you're going to be down for the symposium as well, and obviously, this is an issue, it's one of our top issues with the legislature and with Governor Dwyane, is to find a way to get full funding as it should be. The state pays for what it comes to indigent defense. The county's continuing to, like I said, it's like a dog chasing his tail. It's just never going to catch up.
I think the increased cost, though, too, is, the one thing I think we need to keep our eye on is we're paying for it on an as-needed basis.
Right.
So, that means we're paying for what we need on that. It's right-sized in terms of the cost. The cost is a problem, and the more help we can get from the state, the better.
Yeah.
But, in the meantime, I feel comfortable that the amount we're paying is a product of the expansion of the need for appointed councils and a growing community, too. It's just one of the growing pains.
Well, part of, and I just, since this almost goes into discussion, but part of the proposal is to take, for the indigent defense, the state office to set up regional offices for providing counsel. And so, that's part of that discussion as to what the regional makeup would be. I'd argue center at Medina, and we'd be fine.
Yeah.
So, I guess we'll see.
Those regional organizations work better when they're in your backyard, I would agree with that.
Yeah, rather than, we'd have to be served by Kioga County or Summa County. I kind of wonder how that would work.
How many regions are in discussion?
Well, no, they're just, right now, they're just doing the data work. It's just, like I said, that's just one of those proposals, in addition to how they would manage and operate that kind of statewide.
If they were going to do that and set up maybe by appellate district, you know, that could work, because that's already population factored into it.
Yep, I think that's probably more likely, as opposed to what we know, but that then puts us in with Summa County, if you're talking about appellate districts, and Lorraine. But, that might actually be certainly more workable than Kioga County. Yeah, I know we are, we know our history of regionalism with Kioga County. All right, we diverted too much. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Brett. Chris Jacob, county administrator, still county administrator.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Three resolutions this morning for you. First accepts design build proposals for the construction of a vehicle storage and training facility for the county sheriff. There were three submissions, so we're required by law to shortlist three firms, so we will now proceed, if approved today, with the RFP process for the next phase of that process with three firms who have expressed interest.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next resolution accepts bids for the Medina County Jail security platform project and awards the bid. Bid is being awarded to Crown Commercial Construction in the amount of $169,339. As you may recall, the architect estimate for this project was approximately $223,000, so it came in significantly under the bid. And third and final resolution authorizes an agreement with Gardner for the replacement installation of an air handling unit at the Medina County Human Services Center. We had some discussion about this last week and the increased cost associated with this project. The amount of this work is $682,752 and would be paid from the county's ARPA allocation.
Move to approve three resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Now, I'm glad we're able to address the Human Services Center and with air handling units, and that the HVAC has been a notorious issue. I just have a call left over from a lady that's OOA, had been complaining with frequency about the temperatures and so forth. I know we're trying to work through that issue, and I'm glad we're able to provide them funding to help deal with some of those. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Let's see. We have a resolution supporting natural areas, land conservancy application efforts to secure Clean Ohio Fund green space conservation funding to purchase and permanently protect the Cottonwood Preserve property and share in township. This is a resolution that we had before us some time ago. We had discussion last week, and we have that up for the action.
Move to approve. Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? I did want to share a couple things. I did, I took, and I know we've talked about this probably at Ozim a little bit, expressed the concerns. I looked at the tax bill, obviously, for this parcel, and kind of then grouped it by tax authority, and I know that when an auditor produces that, he typically puts the district library as the district library, but the tax authority is the county commissioners. So, we're kind of responsible for that, but when you look at the greatest impact in terms of the tax base, about 59.95% or 60% of that bill is for Highland local schools, and that's why we reached out to them. And I think that sets a precedent that we have these kind of proposals before us, that we certainly reach out to those that are, those tax authorities that are the most affected, certainly. At the very minimum, the school district needs to be understood what's going on. And then, actually, when you add even joint vocational school, they're like 4%, commissioner's about 19%, and the township itself is about 14.9, 15%, and then, of course, the park district. But, it kind of helps us provide, I think, the understanding as who the affected parties are when it comes to any change in that tax-based status. And I think it emphasized more importantly, I think, to us that as we lose see that erosion, certainly, the schools would agree, we'd like to see some kind of a compensatory, we'd like to see development appropriately where it's zoned and where the utilities are there within that same school district. So, certainly, I think the commissioners, we'd need to be aware of those implications and supportive of efforts to have investment and have that tax base, if you will, kind of restored through projects. And I think that working with Bethany Detler, there are some within Highland District that we ought to be aware of, and certainly ought to see what we can do to support. The other one was, the one thing I have to make a comment, too, is I hate to see, that still bothers me a little bit, loss of farmland. It feeds people. There's a reason we have a CAUV program, because it feeds people. It's agriculture. It's our base economy. It's very important, and I've been totally, very, very supportive of farmland. And then, when you're taking it out, back to farmland, and just basically, okay, open space, that's fine, that's what you need, but those are things we just have to be aware of. Be nice to see also the same kind of acres increased in terms of farmland and farm productivity. So, I know all three of us are very supportive of the Farm Bureau, but those are things that I think we have to balance when we get these proposals and appropriately make, kind of vet it, make sure it has a public forum, and understand, in balance, I certainly am going to support this resolution. I think, given, provided the property owner has provided us enough opportunity to evaluate and say, okay, this is a good proposal, it ought to go forward to the Natural Resources Assistance Council. So, that's, just to indicate where I'm at on that one.
Yeah, I think it's been a helpful exercise. I think, I do agree, I think we're getting the answer right here, and I do think the property owner's perspective helps inform that, because, you know, we're a system based on, you know, property rights, and those things have to have weight in these discussions. But, I also think internally, it kind of gave us an opportunity to go through the process of how we ought to be evaluating these things. We mentioned it even with the court-appointed council fees, you know, those are the costs of a growing county, and these are the revenue sources or things we've always got to keep our eye on, you know, just in balancing those overall, because as population continues to increase and we continue to provide a community where people want to live and work and function and run a business, those challenges of growth are still going to be here. And so, but part of that is having effective green spaces and parks and everything else are a big part of that, so we just need to make sure we're thoughtful when we do that analysis. And I think this was a great exercise, for me at least, to go through and kind of weigh those things and look to maybe creating a procedure whereby we have a little bit more objective and clear-cut process for that going forward, so it's not, when these things come across our desk, and it's the parks or it's Western Reserve, it's easy to say, oh, yeah, that's a great thing for the community, but the balancing is very critical. So, I'm glad we did that. I hope, and I also, I think I said it last week, I'm glad that the delay that it caused, I think, was helpful to get those answers, but not so long of a delay that it caused any, you know, bigger impacts to the project itself. So, I'm happy to move forward the way we are.
Yep. Anything? All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. Richard Nelson, chief building official.
I have a copy of it, if you want. That's a copy of what we passed for him. There you go.
Andy gave it to us, so he's leaving, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our building department report for July. Value of construction is still running 16% more than last year at this time, so that's a good thing. The average cost of new homes did slip back a little. Now, it's right around $400,000. Big news is new dwelling starts for the month of July hit a five-year high. We had 36 new homes. Average over the last five years was 30 homes, so that's pretty amazing. Page two, our monthly receipts, because of the additional work, ran 34% ahead of last year at this time. And page three, that helps bring our year-to-date receipts back up into the black, almost 3% above last year at this time. So, that's good stuff. Page four is residential permits by townships and villages. Page five, commercial permits by townships and villages. And page six is the commercial construction, there were projects that were permitted in July. Nothing major there, five nice projects. Other than that, I would like to talk a little bit about our appeals board. Most of you probably know, we have a board of appeals. Everything that the building department says and does is appealable. You know, we are often thought to have the final word, but there's an appeals board. We have a local board that prevents people from having to go to Columbus to appeal to the state. And over the last five to six years, we've been short of members. We've just managed to keep three on board, which is, you know, the minimum. We're happy to say we got an architect on board, coming on board now. That'll be very helpful, very good, and we'd still like to get a structural engineer. There's still an opening on the structural engineer position. There are a total of five positions, and they're determined by the state. An attorney, a labor representative, structural engineer, mechanical engineer, and a architect. So, that's good stuff. That's good news.
It's largely because those professions are really busy?
I suppose. The fellow we're getting, the architect we're getting is a local architect, Chip Klinkenberg. He's been dabbling with retirement for a little while now.
Okay.
And so, that's helpful, and works out okay for him and works out good for us. And that's all I have.
Okay, I see in activity, new house activity, Seville and Monville kind of still leading the pack.
They've got a couple of housing developments, especially Seville.
I was trying to think where Seville's, where is that occurring? Because... To the north, it's that Ryan Homes. Oh, sure. Yeah.
North of that Park Avenue.
Yep.
Yeah. And you can see it going up 71.
That's right, yeah.
Big time.
I guess the more affordable, you can call $400,000 affordable, but, okay. Very good.
And if folks are available for the appeals board, are you the contact, the first point of contact for that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be great. And our report will get put on our website tomorrow.
Super.
Great.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Richard. All right. Commissioner, we already did resolutions. Public comment? Yes, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Snyder. I live in Chatham Township. My address is 10145 Shaw Road, Spencer, Ohio. And I am here, I'll tell you a little bit, this is about the crosswalks. Now, before the lights were put up, I was coming here, it was during the fall, and it was dark, and it was raining, and it was hard to see anybody in the crosswalk, because the road was shiny, the lights were shining, and I would, and it was dark, and it would be hard to see anybody in the crosswalk. So, I did bring it up here at the Medina County Commissioners before you guys were here. And they said, well, it was the county issue, and the council would be taking care of that. And I says, well, I wasn't going to go see the council whole opening, they would talk to the Medina Council. But then anyways, I saw the lights go up, and I says, well, that's great, now I can see them at night and stuff with the crossing. And, you know, we used it. But, in Kioga Falls, they had the same system, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with this, somebody might be on Howe Road, there's a place where you go up the hill, and at the top of the hill, there was a crosswalk with the same lights flashing. Nobody was stopping. There wasn't anybody in the crosswalk, but there was a couple and their kids on their bicycles waiting to go across the crosswalk. I don't know if they ever got across, because either my husband didn't stop, nobody stopped. So, I came to the Medina County Police Department here in Medina, and I talked to an officer. I says, well, what's the law on that? Do they have to stop? And he says, no, they don't have to stop. I says, so they don't have to stop if the lights are on? No. So, I thought, well, that's not good. And I says, well, this is going to be a waiting for an accident to happen, but then I would stop for somebody in the crosswalk, but people would come and they'd go right through it, even though I was stopping from the other side. So, a couple weeks ago, when I was coming through, of course, the police had, I was going south on court, and the intersection was blocked, and I saw the lights flashing, and I says, so what happened? Somebody got hit, and they did, and unfortunately, it was a fatality. I don't think it's a good idea with the lights, but the yellow caution lights is not good enough. I think there has to be red lights or something. In some places, they do have the red lights with the crosswalk, where people have to stop or supposed to stop. I think if it's a caution, it's not going to work. Well, obviously, it hasn't worked, and I know people do get hit in crosswalks, and then, I was reading the article in the paper, and they said they put those up, so people wouldn't jaywalk. Well, they still jaywalk. I mean, somebody in front of me this morning, they did, right, coming up here. They didn't go up to the light, they went right in between the cars and right across the street. So, I don't know if there's anything that can be done with this, or if anything's planned, or if it's been discussed, especially since there was a fatality. And it was 11:30 in the morning. I went through, I was coming to go through at about 5:00 afternoon, 12:00, and she was 72, but if you put those lights on in present, you're confident that everybody, they're going to stop, and they don't, they don't stop. So, it's an attitude, unfortunately, with drivers, there's no respect on the road. There just isn't. I mean, we've had people that come right around us and go through the red light that we've stopped for. So, anyways, do you have any comments?
We'll certainly talk to the city. The city's responsible for that. I was under the impression that they do have to stop. I think that that was the law, once those were flashing, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I think it's when there's, they're flashing and there's a person in the crosswalk. I think that's when they're obligated to stop. You'd have to yield to somebody that's...
Right, just supposed to yield to pedestrians.
I feel that the pedestrians are yielding to the traffic.
Yeah, right.
It's the other way around.
Well, and that's an interesting point, because if I'm there and I see that traffic isn't, doesn't look like they're going to stop, you're right, like the family you mentioned, we're going to wait until traffic crews...
Yeah, but that was a different scenario.
Right, sure.
The speed limit there was 35, and nobody goes 35, there were 45.
We don't have a jurisdiction, but certainly, we could talk to the city about those concerns. And I'm sure after the fatality, I'm absolutely certain they're probably talking about what they can do.
Yeah, I think if the lights were turned red, then they would have to stop. Either way, they'd be stopping, whether it would be red or yellow, so, and traffic isn't going to be backed up that long.
I think those also, well, and as you said, it's for the city to decide. I think they work particularly well on the one-way stretches and not quite as well on the two-way, because you said you've got northbound and southbound traffic. If one side of the road stops and the other doesn't, then it doesn't do you much good either, so, yeah.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, all right. Chris, you have anything for discussion?
Yes. Just following up on our discussion meeting last week regarding the remaining ARPA dollars. So, this is, I think, a representative summary of what was discussed. And I know that we had talked about bringing this to you this morning. So, we've got the traditional ARPA allocation as of June 30th, which was the most recent quarterly report filed. That's the remaining unallocated portion of 332,842.52. Discussion last week, the additional money would be partly used for the Human Service Center HVAC project, air handler, and I've included metro housing in at the requested $30,000 for the emergency hotel stay monies, leaving a remaining balance of $2,842.52 if everything is fully expended. And then, on the revenue replacement side, we had a carry-forward balance, unallocated balance of 562,457. Additional projects discussed last week included the admin building elevator replacement at 310, individual HVAC units. There are four of those in the first floor of this building, an estimated $200,000. And then, there was brief discussion about also allowing some funding possible for the Fairboard Strategic Plan. I didn't plug a number in there, but backing out the other two projects, the remaining balance available is $52,457.15. So, that's a summary, I believe, that's accurately capturing what we discussed last week.
I'm really happy that when, you know, we got this money a couple of years ago, that we really focused on capital projects that will help long-term budgets alleviate, you know, some problems for the future, so I think we were...
I didn't plug a number in there, but backing out the other two projects, the remaining balance available is $52,457.15. So that's a summary, I believe, that's accurately capturing what we discussed last week.
I'm really happy that when, you know, we got this money a couple of years ago, that we really focused on capital projects that will help long-term budgets alleviate, you know, some problems for the future, so I think we were very responsible.
So we've already taken action on the Human Services HVAC today.
That was this morning, correct.
And I'm comfortable, go ahead and proceeding, making sure we, for the emergency housing hotel.
Okay.
But that's agreeable. And, but we, the other portion, certainly, I think we're also agreeable, we move with those others, with the revenue replacement projects. You mean with the Fair Board, aren't you?
I did get invited to go to the Future Fair Board Committee meeting tonight at 6:30, so I will be attending that.
Cool.
Good, great. I should also mention that yesterday, I received correspondence from the sheriff regarding possible use of remaining ARPA dollars. Also, this is...
Too late, we already spent it.
The sheriff had, I believe he's mentioned to you folks before, that he had received a federal grant, the amount of $500,000, to use towards purchase of a rapid response vehicle, and the total cost of that vehicle, as contained in the attachment, is approximately $757,000, so there's an approximately, approximate $257,000 funding gap.
You don't have $300,000.
Well, based on the summary I just handed you, we do not, but I wanted to bring this to your attention. We didn't have this last week when we had the discussion. I know he had, the sheriff had made comment about this in the past with the board.
Is this more of a priority than the building, or is the building more of a priority?
Well, again, the building's not component of the ARPA funding, so...
Right, he's finding funds elsewhere for his priority already.
I think the thought was the building would be covered for other funds, so...
But still, I mean, if he wasn't doing the building, he could make this that a priority with reaching out to the same people, so...
Yeah, that was my point.
Yeah.
I think also the building presents, the building is the, I think, the place to store the vehicle.
I would agree. I agree, the building comes first at this point, and he can, at this point, it'd be another, yeah. And I know at this, he was hoping to secure Department of Justice funding. There's another round, I mean, next year, Congress comes back at session, so I think hopefully, the next subsequent funding cycle, so either with the state or federal, certainly he can go and try to get more money for the vehicle from other sources.
Will the, will the existing award be available in a subsequent year around?
The $500,000?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the timeframe for expenditure of those funds is, but I can certainly check on that.
That's the question I'd have, I mean, because you're right about future rounds of funding. If it could, if it'd be successful, then that'd be great, but I just don't want to lose the 500 that's there.
Yeah, but you don't want to lose 500, but...
You don't want to spend 275. Or 250, right, right. Yeah, 256.
Was it confirmed that he got that 500,000?
I've not seen any documentation.
Because I thought, I thought there was an issue, whether he was actually going to get it or not.
It is a, it is not a done deal.
Right, yes.
But it, but he's had the requisite communications to confirm that it will, when they finalize the program, this is, this is in there.
It's recommended in there, but Congress has yet to make the decision to actually fund it.
In, yeah, I understood, or is it administrative?
Oh, okay.
Final step.
Oh, okay.
I guess I just, I don't know where the quarter of a million, what packet it comes out of.
No, I know, and I, but that's, but I guess the question is, because I think September is when that 500 becomes final, what does happen to that if we don't, if we don't use it for this?
I'll check on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's really the timeframe is, is how long he is able to have that, secure that. And if he's got it for more than a year or two, then there's the opportunity to see what other funds might be available, even through our normal budgeting process.
Which also gives...
If he can find a way to cut out a quarter of a million out of his budget, okay.
Well, and the...
Consider it.
And the benefit of this carrying into future years are, is the fact that the building would be...
Even Brandon laughed at that.
I know, sorry. I know, technically, he goes up, he never, but I could dream for next year.
If it does carry forward, then the building, the timing of the building might be better, too, so...
Right.
I just, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I did talk to the sheriff about it briefly, but I don't know that I asked that question.
And maybe the building will come in less? I don't know.
Maybe. Maybe.
Well, the legislature does meet next year and does have a budget cycle at the state level, so, and I know he was disappointed in this last round, he didn't get an appropriation he was counting on for that balance. So there's a new year, a new budget, at least at the state level, and I think that's, you know, that'd be rightfully one approach to, but I agree, I think the building comes first.
Yeah.
And it's going to take some time to build it, so in the meantime, we can try, we can work to get or secure the fund.
And we might, there might be additional expenses for the building yet that we don't know.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
That's all I had this morning. Thank you very much.
This will be one of those special projects you work on, right?
Oh, indeed, yes. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Matt, you have anything for us? All right. Dan, anything else? All right. Colleen?
I do not.
No.
Colleen, all right. Well, I've got nothing else, so entertain a motion.